Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Monday, January 28, Des Moines Council Workshop. We're going to jump right into the capital improvement program and debt. And I believe Scott Sanders is going to make that presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Council members. Scott Sanders, Finance Director. And yes, this morning's topic is Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, and the debt service levy that is associated with the GO bonds that get issued every spring and have a tax rate that's associated with that debt service. There'll be some brief discussions about the GO bonds that are issued for TIF projects as well. Discussions about enterprise capital will occur two weeks from now when we talk about the individual utilities, stormwater, sanitary, and parking. So those capital discussions will be had in about two weeks at that council workshop. So this presentation that you've got in front of you is similar to previous years in its format. We have categories of capital improvement planning that we work on, relates pretty similarly to departments at the city. As questions get asked, I may, I'll attempt to answer them, but clearly some of the details will need to be provided by other staff, and I may rely on them for those details. We have guiding principles when we go to plan for the capital improvement program. Nothing has changed from this list. Clearly, we have public safety as a priority, as well as health needs. We look at grant funding. We want to make sure that before projects make it on to the CIP, any additional funding that may be necessary outside of the city is very real, and it's something that is deliverable. We have economic development initiatives, and you'll see there's some other goals that are mentioned there as well. We have a TIF policy that we make sure we adhere to and an amount of debt that's issued related to TIF. We have our citizen satisfaction survey. As you have seen before, there's a high level of desire for street repairs from the citizenry, and you'll see that this capital improvement plan continues to address street issues. Preferences for projects that do have outside sources that are being used. And then lastly, we have a debt management policy as well. So to get into the numbers, the first slide here is the CIP projects that are tax-supported. And so these projects and amounts have a debt service levy behind them as part of the property tax. The first column there is what has been adopted in the past, and because we have a five-year plan, there was no 2019 projects at that point. And now we have the recommended column in the middle. There are some adjustments you'll see and the differences outlined there, including adding the final year of 2019. As is customary, we don't have the last year fully leveraged at any point in time, so you'll see that last year in 2019 is only $22 million today, but it will likely come up to the $25, $26 million amount, similar to the 2018 figures you see there. The total changes from what was adopted last year is about $3.6 million. When you net out all the increases and decreases, the largest increase by far was the additional ADA funds or projects that needed funding. And we added over $4 million to the five-year plan, just associated with ADA improvements. And most of that was due to the federal mandates and the consent decree that the city's agreed So how that breaks out between project types, again, the citizen survey indicated a strong need for streets. Well, that accounts for nearly half of the CIP expenditures. There's $151 million in total. Again, this is over the entire, actually, this has a six-year period that includes '14 through '19. Parks has a large percentage of that, and then municipal buildings and bridges, fire and library. The miscellaneous item you'll see, $12 million of that is the NFC and the NDC funding that's on an annual basis. Any questions before I move on into more detail? So this shows you the actual numbers for each of those categories by year. Then it comes to about $27 million in total funding that will be supported by the debt levy in the '14 fiscal year. And then the following five years, it hovers around 25 to 25 and a half. I guess it makes it to $26 million in the 2018 year. Again, the street improvements is the largest amount. This is just the amount of bonds, so this is the city's participation by category. In the slide that will follow, you'll see when other funding is added to that, the totals as well. So upon issuing those GO bonds, this is what happens to the debt service levy. In the current year fiscal year '13, the debt service levy is at 4.22, and that is for every $1,000 of valuation, taxable valuation at the city. That was part of the two-year budget plan that was put in place with the anticipation of being able to lower that to 410 for next year fiscal year '14. That was done for the most part because of our benefit levies needing to go up. To keep the total tax rate the same for fiscal year '13 and '14, we needed to reduce the debt service levy and increase the operating levy associated with pension funds. So that should allow us then to keep, that will allow us to keep the tax rate the same for 2014. In fiscal year '15, you'll see that it drops again. That's in anticipation that the pension funds will need further money, further higher rates yet in '15, and then start to come back down hopefully in '16 based on the investment earnings that we've seen in the pension funds.
Scott, Mr. Mayor, could I just?
Go right ahead.
I just want to emphasize that point that Scott just made. What's happening is our total tax rate is staying the same under this proposal, but within that total tax rate, there's a decrease in the debt service levy brought about by the changes that Scott's talked about, but the decrease in the debt service levy is compensated by an increase in the operating levies to pay for increased pension costs. The other levies are the same, so our expenditures are on track, but you see those two fundamental shifts. So the good news, in a way, is that we've been able to reduce the debt service levy with these expenditures, but that does provide us the capacity necessary to pay for the increased pension costs while holding the rate the same.
So do we know specifically what projects right now have been impacted? Because you added the ADA, the increase in ADA, but obviously for it to come down, we're not doing some projects or we're extending them into a future budget here?
Well, we're changing the level of debt payments annually. Since these bonds are issued over 20 years, we did have some peaks and valleys that I was able to smooth out and allow for bringing down the debt service levy in '14.
Okay, so the projects?
The projects.
Are all the same?
Pretty much the same. Pretty much the same, yeah, and we can go through, and the detail is in here.
Excellent.
And then the idea is to level the debt service rate off at about 410 to 415 moving forward. Again, that, those numbers may change slightly as the operating levy may need a penny or two more in the levy. That may shift back and forth. These rates and all the summary information and detail that you have in front of you is based on the projects that, again, have sound funding already identified. If there's a project that deals with a building that needs a referendum, they have not been included in here. There are some planning funds, but no construction funds on any new buildings that would require a referendum. So we need to kind of get that cleared up first before we would add it to the CIP. So that would have an impact on future rates too with those projects. On the TIF side of the projects, there was an increase of about $1.26 million associated with Southeast Connector, some additional funding that is put into that project in the current, or in the next fiscal year '14. Otherwise, some very minor changes, about $200,000 a year in some shifting of projects on the TIF side. The two projects or the two TIF districts that are most active are the downtown metro center and the southeast ag. The southeast ag is, the TIF is helping to support the municipal service center as well as the construction of the southeast connector sections. So not a lot of change in this one, other than adding a little bit of funding to southeast And here's the detail behind those totals. You'll see the municipal service center is the largest piece of the borrowing for '14, and we have the southeast connector split out into two segments, the additional million that is required for southeast 6th to southeast 14th. And then the section from southeast 14th to southeast 30th was actually just moved forward a year. We had $750,000 planned for fiscal year '15, but with the construction season, they're able to move that forward into '14. And then the other, go ahead.
Is the Walnut Street Mall, is that $1 million reasonable, that timeline? Obviously, you've got it in there, but I'm just, based upon the...
Yeah, actually, I would probably need to refer to others to make sure the timing is right, but that $1 million is also an add to the project list as well. I can get you more detail afterwards if that's okay. Any other questions on the TIF itemized list? So as far as the different use types and funding, that first column is actually the enterprise operating, so the utilities are supporting the miscellaneous and the streets. And then you have the GO bonds, which I've focused on in the other slides, the GO TIF. And then you've got the federal grants, the state grants, the annual gaming funds that are inserted into both the bridges and the streets, then the other category. So this CIP is looking at about $273 million worth of improvements over the next six years. And most of that is GO bonds, but a significant portion of that is federal funding and state grants as well.
The miscellaneous under operating, 625?
Yes. ERP, our software, is the largest portion of that funding. That's the last portion that's necessary. So the utilities actually help pay for some of the software costs since the utilities are benefiting from the finance software and payroll software as well.
And is the gaming funds that are listed up there, are those consistent? Are we seeing any change in those?
No change. Two million a year.
Isn't that a percentage?
Well, we have, it's a formula base. And my, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Maybe Dan or Kurt or somebody has them out there, but generally speaking, I think the revenues are increasing over what we've had.
Consistent.
But the funding allocation would remain inconsistent with council policy, which is to use them for bridges and streets.
Correct.
And so that reflects $2 million a year for bridges for the six years. And 2.0, about $2.7 million a year for the streets for the six years. This is the expenditure side, and again, by category of CIP. And so we saw this for the GO bond portion, but this has all funding associated with it. So you've got the street improvements, by far the largest segment of this, and most of that is upfront because of the southeast connector federal funding that was received. That's why you see, you know, $37 million of street improvements in fiscal year '15 decreasing over time. We have the federal funds being spent on the southeast connector there. The intent would be to continue to receive federal grants and other projects as we go So now again, there's a narrative for each of the sections of borrowing. The bridge and viaduct, I'm going to go through these somewhat quickly, but feel free to stop with any questions. There is a bridge evaluation that's done, and so the recommendations for bridge projects is based on the 2013 report. There's indication there on the second bullet that the $2 million a year that is spent from gaming funds. The major projects coming up for the next few years, we have the approaches to the red bridge just up the river here. There's $1 million of GO funds for the approaches, and then the stormwater utility will pick up the cost of the raising of the actual bridge, which I'm not certain we have an exact amount on at this point.
Just a reminder, this particular project comes out of the larger discussion we've had about flood improvements, and it's one of the improvements, sort of strategic improvements that you can do that improve the flood protection systems. It's actually a very clever idea, but it does involve raising that red bridge by a certain number of feet, in order to make it four feet, in order to make it, allow the passage of water more readily. There are other components of the flood improvement program that they'll pick up, that'll be addressed when we do the storm and sanitary sewer discussion in a couple of weeks.
So the other bridges that'll be affected in the CIP are the Grand Avenue Bridge and there's, well, actually, the Grand Avenue Bridge here at the Des Moines River, and then also over at Walnut Creek out west, finishing that project up. So those are the major projects that are bridge-related.
I keep hearing that the southeast 30th viaduct's going to be redect. When are we proposing that?
Skip, I'd have to refer to, well, let me preface it. Pat, if you know the answer, come on up.
Each year, there's an evaluation of the...
Pat, because it's the Public Works Department, each year we do the analysis of the bridges and the viaducts. As far as southeast 30th, while maybe in need of repair, I don't think it's on schedule at this point. We'll check that for you.
The fire highlights coming up. Equipment acquisition, there'll be a slide that just follows this that'll itemize the equipment purchases that are necessary. It's $10 million worth. There's $100,000 that's included in the CIP for fire station expansion projects. I think you've all heard about the future need of stations in the northeast and possibly the southeast, depending on the pace of growth and development. And so what we've put in the CIP here is some planning funds that can look at the potential timing of those, you know, pinpoint location a little closer, get a feel for the size of the station, assist the fire department in answering some of the final questions, if you will, before the city would need to come out with likely a referendum, since the, both the northeast and the southeast would likely need to be GO bond-funded projects.
So this is one of the really major initiatives in the recommended CIP that's different. This is an allocation of funding that allows us to do the study necessary to then come back to you with a definitive proposal on fire station, northeast, southeast, whatever comes out of that study. The chief has been front and center on this issue. This is really the first step in that process, and once these results come back, you'll be able to see that, make some policy decisions about what you want to do, and then if you want to proceed forward, there would be the scheduling of a referendum. We can't do this as an essential corporate purpose project, which means the only way to do it is to have a referendum and use that to get voter approval to allow the issuance of bonds for it.
So we're looking specifically at northeast, southeast, but it will also take into account all of the fire stations?
It would look at the whole city. I'm seeing the chief nod, yeah.
Okay.
The requirement there at the state, we have the ability to issue $1 million of essential corporate purpose bonds for any one project. And so any project above $1 million requires a referendum if it's not an essential.
What effect does being built in a TIF district have on the funding?
It really depends. If it's a TIF project, that limit does not apply. And so there's really the question of whether or not it applies as a true TIF project. So a fire station that benefits, you know, a specific area of economic development might be considered a TIF project, but it's a project, it's a decision made project by project.
How come the station downtown didn't have to have a referendum?
That's because it did qualify as an economic development benefit. Scott, as part of TIF, urban renewal.
It's an urban renewal district.
Well, let me, there's really, there's two things. Scott's answered it. First is being in a tax increment district allows you to designate it as a tax increment project. But secondly, and actually more importantly, there has to be money in the TIF account. There is money. There is capacity in the downtown TIF which has allowed us to do that. But if you establish a TIF in a different part of the city, you could certainly build these projects with that authority, but you'd have to make sure there was revenue there to support it.
And then lastly, there's some remodeling, including re-roofing that is part of the fire CIP. There's the equipment list that I mentioned showing you that it, you know, the larger fire trucks can be expensive. The library category, there are two projects identified in that first bullet point, a window project at the south side and then HVAC at the central library. The HVAC is dealing with the IT segment or rooms within the central library, and those are separate cooling units that are necessary there to be replaced. The southeast branch, there's a study underway there. That's the $100,000 figure, trying to understand, similar to the fire situation, what's the right answer for a library down in the southeast side of town. Again, similar prep as far as, you know, helping to identify location opportunities, the size, and things of that nature. The collections additions is always a large expense.
Scott? A question. The initial HVAC system at the central library, is that lawsuit, did that go to law or did they settle on that?
That is in litigation.
It's in litigation still, okay.
Miscellaneous items, the tree replacement fund has been combined. It's $150,000 a year. The storm and sanitary are helping to support that project. The public art, that continues at $100,000 a year. I would add that the city is assisting in trying to find additional funding for the public art foundation, whether that...
Can you expand upon that? What does that mean?
Well, really, it's any opportunity that we can find as far as state, state funding, if there's any federal funding. It's in its initial phases. I think we need to just be very supportive of trying to sponsor any opportunities for other funding.
Let me just add to that. One of the discussions we've had recently with H&amp;K, who's our federal lobbyist, is the possibility of getting federal funds. So we've worked with H&amp;K and our congressional delegation, and of course with Jessica Rowe to see if there is the possibility to get some federal funding through National Endowment for the Arts or some other federal source. I have no idea whether that pans out, but I am well aware that the request for $100,000 isn't sufficient in their eyes. It's difficult for us to allocate more dollars, so what we're trying to do is figure out a way to supplement what we do. I can't guarantee it'll work, but it certainly is worth an effort, and there is art funding that is available federally, and we ought to be more aggressive in getting it regardless of what we funded here. So we've taken on that initiative to help the public art foundation, see if they can seek additional dollars, and I, as I say, I don't know if it'll be successful, but it seems appropriate, so we've done that.
And I would just echo that we need to be very aggressive, because if you look at the $100,000, that's below what the ordinance requires.
Right, it is.
I mean, it does not meet the ordinance that we voted to approve for public structures, for public art. And I would just remind everybody, if you look at Sixth Avenue Bridge, they've gone to the public art foundation to get the money. If you look at Nolan Plaza, they're in Civic Center, they're going to the public art foundation, but yet we're not funding them at the level that the ordinance specifies, but yet we're asking everybody to go and seek funds. So they've done a great job of leveraging the minimal amount that we have, the city, we as a city have given them, and if you look at the economic impact and what it's doing for the community, you can't disregard that because it is having an impact.
It's a wonderful effort. It is very positive for all those reasons that you say, and I think it's one of the things that led us to say, look, let's see if we can sort of help them with our good efforts to see if we can maximize other federal or state funding. So we're trying to do that. The other thing I would say is that even though this is the direct allocation to the public art foundation, and it is less than what the ordinance talks about, we do, we do look at specific projects, and sometimes through specific project funding, we can augment their efforts. So that, there is actually some additional funding that goes to them for specific projects via that process. Especially if there's infrastructure involved at the city. Think of the Riverwalk or the Sixth Avenue Bridge. I know there's a lot of effort going on in that project as well. I know there's a lot of effort going on in that project as well that's public art-related.
Can you get us a copy of the, the ordinance or the policy that we set?
Yes.
My recollection is it was something like, you know, 1% of the-
One and a half percent of public work.
The CIP.
I think, yeah, the-
And I'm, I, and, and the reason I ask is, I, I do appreciate that $100,000 isn't 1% of that, but, but, but my recollection is that this is not the only expenditure that meets the policy that we set. There could be public art built into the projects that we already have. And I, I know the Public Art Foundation report, annual report that we get wouldn't summarize that, but, but I would like to see that.
What, Mr. Coleman will be happy to gather the information. I think the other thing that's, that's fair to say is that the city has undergone some fairly demanding times here with, with monies, particularly on the capital side of the ledger. You might remember a few years ago, we had a debt service levy rate that was up north of $5 per thousand. We're now closer to four, and that's occurred at a cost. And one of the costs is that we've had to skinny up funding on some projects, and this is one that has had that happen. And so I think from the staff perspective, we, we, we have to try to be as careful as we can in funding things that are perhaps viewed as non-essential. So in, in any event, we, we do understand the need for it and the value it has in the community, and we're going to look at a lot of different ways to help it happen, but we think the funding ought to stay at this level.
Scott, one quick question. Back to the, quickly to the city tree replacement fund. There's also, is there not a mitigation fund? Would that not be in here? It'd be in the operations side?
Right. Trying to remember what the details on that are.
It's more like an enterprise fund that we-
Forestry improvements? Urban conservation? We, so we have a program that was-
Do we have any accounting whatsoever of that as to whose?
Yes, in fact, I just provided some information to Councilman Moore.
Okay.
So I can provide that to you as well, if you'd like. It, uh-
Yep.
Itemizes the, the tree loss and credits that go on between utilities and, and the program.
And developers?
Yes. I'll get that to you as well. The Neighborhood Finance Corp. and Development Corps, that's the $1 million a year for each of those two are in the miscellaneous items as well. The ERP that was mentioned earlier is part of miscellaneous. Those, that project is moving along very quickly at this point. We have an April 28th go-live date for the financial functionality of that software to be followed up with the HR payroll this fall, and then finishing up some of the last modules probably in January of 2014. So about, not quite halfway through that, that project at this point. And I believe what we'll try and do actually with the ERP is, is have a workshop kind of update or summary, maybe at the end of March or April, if that works with the council. Municipal buildings, they're mentioned before, the ADA modifications, we needed to add some additional funding there as well. There's a half million just for the likelihood that we'll identify additional needs in the next year, such that they could be improved in fiscal year 15. The project civic access, that is the consent decree that was mentioned before. For the buildings downtown here, the municipal buildings, City Hall, the Armory, and the police headquarters, we've identified $300,000 in security improvements, as well as, you'll see in the third bullet point, there are $100,000 that would go towards more general space study, space needs, kind of looking at, you know, how the city government interacts with the public in our buildings, settings, and what improvements could be made there, and quite honestly, the challenges that, that the older buildings have for proximity, where departments working together, as well as with the public. So this, this would be the first step of identifying what our administrative and police headquarters facilities might look like long-term for the city. Municipal Service Center, this is finishing up the first phase, 6.75 million in TIF bonds. But there's also clearly a need to move into Phase Two, so the, the staff, finance department, and others are looking to find funding for what we'll call probably a Phase II-A, something of that nature, to try and get probably the fleet services relocated to the new municipal service center as quickly as possible. So we'll continue to try and identify financing strategies for, for the municipal service center. Very, very critical project that we continue to try and move forward on. Park highlights, the first of which, $300,000 for the, the comprehensive park plan. You'll notice the theme here. Several departments are, are looking at their comprehensive plans and what their long-term facility needs are. Parks is included in that with their comprehensive plan. Recreational trails continue to be a priority. We've got the listing there. Blank Park Zoo, I believe this is, yeah, the final payment in that commitment, as the foundation essentially takes that over in the operations. The forestry improvements, this is where there was some redundancy seen in the forestry and tree replacement with similar objectives, so that those funding streams can be combined into one project. And then lastly, the general renovation of, of park buildings to include the Fort Des Moines and Grayslake as well.
The Blank Park Zoo foundation payment, that's done on a disbursement basis?
Yes.
It's not just one lump sum, correct?
We have to make the funds available, but then there is an accounting that they have to send to us that the, that the projects are being completed before we reimburse them. There's no reason to, to believe we wouldn't need to issue the full amount, though. They're moving along quite well, those projects.
Could you go back?
Yes.
One, and I would, if you could, in the forestry area, having just spent a few days with the federal government on this, I'd like to see what our forestry plan is, because in here it says that funding available in both the urban conservation project, I'm not quite sure what that means, but the city tree replacement project, how are we doing? Are we planting more trees or cutting more down?
Okay. I know that we are.
On the annual basis.
I know that we are adding more than what's being taken down at this point, and I can show you what those numbers-
That includes our, our friends at Mid-American Energy. So with what they'd cut down and what we cut down, we're planting more.
That is my understanding. And I can show you the itemized-
Well, I'd like to see that.
Yep.
Scott, I'll make him a copy after this meeting, what you gave me.
That sounds good. On the street projects. The Beaver Avenue streetscape, the streetscapes, as the second bullet indicates, we, we show $1 million a year for general streetscapes, and then as the projects receive, or are able to attain private funding and move forward, they, they have a, a separate project then identified. And so Beaver Avenue now has its own project name and specifics as it moves forward. Not quite $2 million project that really has everything that you see there in a normal streetscape with the, with the storm sewer included and pedestrian lighting and whatnot. East 46 and Hubble, that's a signal project. There's a school right there at that, that intersection that has some geo-bonds, as well as some grant funding to take care of that. The Indianola Avenue widening continues through East Army Post down to 69. You'll see that that's scheduled for fiscal year 16 to 21, so that's a major initiative that's being taken on as well, a little over $6 million in widening. Southeast Connector will finish up the southeast 6th to southeast 14 segment. I mentioned earlier that that, with the final cost estimates, needed an additional $1 million of TIF from southeast ag to support that, that project. And that ended up being about a $21 million project. Continuing with the street projects, the next segment of Southeast Connector down to southeast 30th. Don't really need to read that, but that is the, the project that received federal funding, the US DOT with Tiger Grant of $10 million, and then some other local funding through the TIF, the MPO with their STP funding. So that's a great example of, of multi-level funding sources to get a very important segment of our southeast connector built and constructed. The sidewalks, the ADA compliance, again, it's, it's throughout this document, another $1.005 in planning each year, the CIP, as we move forward with that, with that schedule.
Do we know that we've been approved for an extension of time?
That, I do not have a final answer on yet. I heard the, it was encouraging, that we might be.
We've, we've had some encouraging discussions. We do not have a formal written approval yet.
Okay.
And then lastly, the sidewalk replacement program had a quarter of a million added to that as well. It is categorized here as catch-up with needed repairs that have been identified. Clearly, as we identify sidewalk repair needs, we need to address those, otherwise it becomes a, a liability issue. So we want to make sure we continue to address those as soon as they're identified.
Scott, excuse me. Jeff, just to clarify that sentence in the middle, are we, is the extension for project civic gas access just for the sidewalks or for compliance in all the categories?
What we're asking for would be an extension for the vast majority of the categories. What we may or may not get is yet to be determined.
Thank you.
The next slide actually itemizes the, the projects within the street category to include the traffic signals and the sidewalks. And again, there is a second document that I've handed out to you that, that gets down to the very specific addresses for certain projects. That is meant to be the middle level of detail, if you will. We're putting the final touches on the two-inch book of CIP projects that will be available that, at the end, let's see, it'll be February, I think it's February 8th, the Friday of the first full week of, of February. That'll be at the same time that we will, the finance department will have your operating budget prepared for you as well. The detailed listing that you have as a handout is also going to be on the web and available to the public, so that they can see the itemized lists as well.
I just, I want to, I want to be sure, is there a, is there different funding on, for instance, what we're expending from Perry Meadows, or is that buried in these numbers here?
The gaming funds?
Yeah.
Is the $2 million a year for bridges and about $2.7 million a year in streets. Actually had, um, what's more than that?
I think, I think, Scott, I think Mr. Coleman's question is how much money from gaming is going into the ADA compliant sidewalk work? Is that your question?
The fourth line, fourth line down, is that 2.7?
Yeah.
And then there would be $2 million.
Okay, I see it.
There'd be $2 million a year for bridges as well.
Okay. So is the total number right now 4.6, 4.7?
That goes to capital.
Okay.
And I believe there's 1.3 million to help with the public works operations.
It would take us to six.
But it, but it's streets. Public work, street work is where the money is going. It's all going to streets, some of it's, a little bit's operations, most of it's capital.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Very good.
So that's it.
Anybody have anything? Scott?
I could, just real quickly, so just a reminder on our calendar, we have two weeks from now, the enterprise funds at the workshop discussion on February 11th. There will be, I guess the other thing I need to remind you of is that with the debt service projects, we need to have a pre-levy resolution that will occur in conjunction with the budget document. What that does is, is it's just a hearing on the debt, the actual proceedings to move forward with the debt will occur in May, as typically is done. But we have to have the hearing taken care of at, at the time of the budget, so that we have the authorization to put a payment of the interest that will come due in the next fiscal year. It's just a, a cleanup administrative task that we do each year. So February 11th will be the debt service levy, or pre-levy, and then all the different enterprise funds, sanitary, storm, parking, and solid waste. February 25th's council meeting would be the approval of the budget and the CIP. Thank you.
Well, just one question, and so it may be a month warning. By the time we vote on it, could you and your team create a list of any funding that's in the CIP that is predicated on private fundraising or grants or other, just so we, you know, just so we know? My, the reason I want that is, come May and June, when we borrow money, if we haven't made progress on that, I think it's silly for the city to go into debt and start to pay interest on stuff that may not be viable, or it would be worth transferring that debt to a different project so we paid it off earlier, you know, got the project done.
Yes. Mr. Coleman, this is actually an issue that has been raised previously at this table, I think by you.
Yeah.
And there is a procedure in place now that before we ask council to actually make the final decision on the issuance of bonds, we are expected to provide to you an analysis of each project to make sure that the complete funding is in fact available, so that we don't end up in a situation where we issue bonds predicated upon some other funding source that has not materialized at that point in time. So that's actually part of our standard process, and is information that we'll provide to you before you have to make that decision. So your question's right on point and consistent with the approach that we've used the last several years or so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Try to remember.
All right, let's move on to the bank on program.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just looking out in the audience, I see we've got several guests here, probably for partnership. Could we just flip those? Because-
Does anybody else?
Fine.
All right, let's move on to the partnership update.
Sorry, guys.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jay Byers, and I'm the CEO and creator of Des Moines Partnership. Live at 5150 Grand here in Des Moines. We are very happy to be here with you today. No, I know all of you pretty well, and I think, hopefully you will agree that 2012, the partnership and the Downtown Community Alliance had a great year. We got a great work plan for 2013, and we've got a number of our senior executives here to give you a brief update on some of the things that are happening. First and foremost, I just want to thank each and every one of you. I think, again, we've had a great working relationship with the city of Des Moines. We're on, we're in constant contact with council and with the city leaders, and all the great things that we've seen in Central Iowa in the last few years, whether it's all these great rankings, on which you'll hear about shortly, or all these great projects that we continue to read about in the paper. Again, I think it's a, it's a great example of a public-private partnership that works really, really well. And again, so more than anything, thank you for having us here today. Thank you for your support of the partnership and the Downtown Community Alliance. And first up is Glenn Lyons, who is the CEO of the Downtown Community Alliance. And as Glenn is coming up, we do have an updated 2012 annual report that we've synthesized into one pager. This is hot off the press, so enjoy this as well.
Thank you, Mayor County, members of council. It's Glenn Lyons, Downtown Community Alliance. Actually, I didn't bring it with me, but I'd be happy to share our 2013- Actually, I didn't bring it with me, but I'd be happy to share our 2013 work program with you. If you're interested, I could send it to the city manager's office, and he could distribute it from there. We have four primary objectives, and in the work program, the first is reducing office vacancy, and we do that through our own recruitment and retention programs. But we also are working very closely with the city of Des Moines Economic Development staff to encourage the conversion of older historic office buildings into residential. And that's a theme that, if I were up here longer, I would keep saying over and over again, we can do very little without working with you. Together, we're successful partners. We're also working with the city to revitalize the core. That's very much, the downtown core, very much part of the Wall Street effort, which begins by building a new public space that increases accessibility for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists, but also involves a commercial reinvestment strategy in the buildings that range from Capital Square to Yonkers. And it's a very aggressive program, and I think over the next year, with any luck, we'll be very successful in that regard. We also are trying to continue to work to develop the neighborhoods in the downtown, whether the Sherman Hills or the East Villages, and once again, we're doing that with you. We do what I, we can to encourage investment and proper management and marketing of those areas with the neighborhood business and associations. And finally, we, we also work to improve the public facilities in downtown. Sometimes that's recruiting or creating new spaces, and we work with you in that regard. But most times, it's making sure that they're maintained properly, that we manage them together, that they're programmed properly, that they actually get used. You know, when $60 million goes into the Riverwalk, you want a lot of people to use it for as long as possible during the year. The Greater Des Moines Partnership contributes $1 million to the DCA's budget, and we turn that into $3.3 million worth of investment. Much of that is involved in the events that we do, but this economic development, marketing, alternate, promoting alternate commuting passenger rail, these are programs that we're involved in as well. The four major events that we produced in 2012 attracted 850,000 people, the farmer's market being the largest of that at 500,000, and, and other events that we helped support took us to the million-dollar level. So, you know, we're pretty excited about what we're able to do with these resources in a town this size. We really enjoy working with the city of Des Moines in, in the efforts that we have to make downtown better, and I think the, the product is, is pretty impressive out there in downtown. Thank you.
Glenn, just for our, an, an update, how many employees now does DCA have?
I have 12.
12?
And then, I did mention the Operation Downtown program in those numbers, but we contract with other people to do the SMID work as well.
Okay, so the, the 12 includes?
It includes my management team. We have about 12 ambassadors in the, in the SMID program as well.
Okay, so that's additional to the 12 that you have?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Swayze, and I'm the Business Recruitment Director at the partnership, and also Des Moines resident, 4412 Southwest 33rd. Want to give you an update on some results from last year and our plan moving forward in 2013.
Thank you very much.
The summary, the executive summary I'm passing out is the report that we gave to our Board of Director, to our Regional Economic Development Board at the end of the year. Our goals, every year, we, we, our goals are to affect at least 30 business projects, which would include typically at least 10 new companies to the region, and typically at least 20 expansions. So we track the expansions and the new locations, as well as, we track the square footage affected and the capital investment and the jobs. So you, as you can see, in 2012, we had 11 new locations and 21 expansions in the area, with the capital investment of over $260 million.
When you say in the area, what, what's your specific area that you cover in this report?
We cover a six-county region now, so it would be Polk, Warren, Dallas, Madison, Jasper.
Okay.
And one more. Last one. Marshall, Marshall's also included. And some of the notable projects in the city of Des Moines, last year, we had projects with Kayden Management, Hewlett-Packard, Bano, Publicis Healthcare, two projects with AppCor, Meridian Health, Premier Business Services, and The Biz, which I'll talk about later, worked with a number of, of new companies, and Creative Works and Hatchlings are a couple successes early on out of that, out of that effort. And of course, we work closely with, with the Economic Development Department and, and the city, and we're partners with them on, on all of the projects. I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights in each bullet point, the existing business area of our efforts. We conducted 222 one-on-one meetings with existing businesses in the area to find out if there are any opportunities for growth, barriers to growth, any, any issues that we may need to resolve, or if we, if there's anything they can do to help them grow. We also make sure they're aware of things like the job training program at Des Moines Area Community College, and make sure they're accessing any state programs that are available out there. Through those efforts, as I mentioned, we identified 38 projects that we helped companies expand. Of course, you can read the rest. In the business recruitment area, we conducted 42 prospect visits. So we're out throughout the year, marketing across the country to businesses, site selection consultants, et cetera. And hopefully, their first call into the area comes into the partnership, and we can, we can show off the entire area. And so we coordinate, we're kind of the quarterback. We coordinate the efforts to get them into town, and then we let each community kind of sell themselves, but we'll coordinate their, their schedule and get them into town. We respond, we responded to 57 inquiries last year. I won't read everything to you, but you can see there. And then we also use the Principal Golf Classic as an event to invite people to the area, and we're excited that it's moving to Wacanda, and we'll have great access to get people in to show off the city of Des Moines in that regard. Our public relations area, we had 27 national placements last year. We work hard to make sure that Des Moines, and the Des Moines area raises to a higher level with the national publications. And if you look at the, the page, it was by itself, there's just an example of some of the rankings, and also, look who's talking, is what we call it, some of the national publications and what they're saying about Des Moines and Greater Des Moines and Iowa. We rate well as a, obviously, as a place to raise a family, but we also rate very well as a place to do business, and so we make sure, try to keep, keep that on the forefront of the national level. And then the other side of that one-page flyer is some of the recent, recent projects. We keep a project on here maybe three to, two to three, maybe four years, so you can scroll down and see some of the projects, and then the associated capital investment from each project. And then we have a research person that's really second to none in the nation. She's, she does a great job, and so we, we're kind of the clearinghouse of all the information for the, for the metro area. So if anybody needs information on demographics, or, or commuting patterns, or population growth trends, whatever it may be, we have the, I think we have the best person in the country, and she's, she serves on a lot of national boards as well, so she's just a great asset to have. And then the last bullet point there is the Business Innovation Zone, which I'd like to thank you for being a, helping fund that program and effort, and coming to the table actually first with us. That's been a success so far. We've served 35 clients so far, and obviously, we've received a lot of recognition for those efforts, and we hope that that continues to grow. Last year, we launched, one of the things we kept hearing throughout the startup community is access to capital. It was really hard here, and so a lot of times, companies start here, and maybe they'll move out to the coast because it's easier to access capital. So we launched Plains Angels, which you may have read about, and it looked, there's $260,000 had been funded last year in that effort for new startup companies. And there's a lot of detail in the pages after my executive summary, if you wanted to read more about each of these bullet points.
Mike, if you're gonna...
Any questions?
Back to the existing businesses, I guess just from my standpoint personally, when you're making calls on different businesses, would it be possible, I think there would be some, that it would be appropriate for the appropriate ward council, or mayor, or at-large, to be included in some of those? Not all of them, I understand.
Certainly.
But it'd be nice if we could have a, a calendar, or just some communication with us.
Certainly.
So that if it made sense for us to participate. I know we did do one or two of those, and I thought it was very beneficial both ways.
I agree. Yes, and we'll, we'll work through Matt Anderson and give him our schedule, and then let you guys know.
If it works fine.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, then at least we had a chance.
That's not a problem at all. I encourage that.
Mike, I appreciate when we went up to Fleet Farms, trying to get them to Eastgate, and I guess they ended up going to Ankeny, but they did come to the, the local area here. So thank you for your efforts, but still no success at Eastgate.
Thank you, too. Worked hard on that one.
Yeah.
And then moving forward, 2013, I'll just read a little bit through our goals of 2013, and some, some highlights are, can't see very well. Our first goal is to exist startup and technology firms throughout the area. We continue to promote Sourcelink, which provides one-stop web portal for small business resources. We support the Business Innovation Zone, as I just mentioned, The Biz, and Startup City Des Moines. Our second goal is to assist existing industry. We conduct industry council meetings to identify issues that impede growth opportunities. We partner with local economic development groups, making executive calls, as I mentioned. We serve as a resource for local companies to address any concerns that they may have on the, in the, in the region of, that may get in the way of growing. We recognize firms that have made substantial economic impacts at our Celebrate Business Awards. And then we conduct corporate headquarters visits when we're outside of the state, marketing, marketing Central Iowa to the, to the country and to the world. And so if there's a headquarters in a market, we'll make sure that we go visit the decision-makers to hope to influence them to grow in Des Moines rather than other areas.
Did you contact, let the local people know that you were visiting the corporate headquarters?
We do. We do.
Okay.
And then as we continue to market the region, we have a very aggressive marketing and travel plan, where we, we travel with the, on our own, as well as with the state of Iowa. We'll typically, typically go on seven to 10 business recruitment trips, where we go to a major market, and we meet one-on-one with individuals in their offices. And as I mentioned earlier, that's business, corporate real estate executives, site selection consultants, architects, engineers, whoever may have a, a say or an influence on where companies may locate. Meet with a lot of accounting firms as well, to make them aware of, of how we tax in the And we continue to expand our, our reach on social media. I mentioned the Principal Classic event, where we bring people in. And we're working on a, a new branding campaign for the Ames-Des Moines Corridor, that will have kind of a, probably more of a bio sciences spin, and try to, to, to get our area known a little more for, for bio sciences. And then lastly, I'll talk a little bit about The Biz, which is the Business Innovation Zone. Goal number one is to, to assure the awareness of The Biz as a place for entrepreneurs to go to start their company, make sure people are aware of it. We're working to make sure that we have adequate funding to keep that in place. And I mentioned Plains Angels. One of the main issues is raising capital, especially in the middle of the country, and we want to increase the membership in Plains Angels to at least 100 people this year. And we will, we will plan to bring them at least 24 solid business projects, where they can take a look at whether they want to invest in a certain company or not. So that's, that's two, generally two a month. And then our goal is to, this year, obtain at least $1 million for startup companies, where last year, we obtained 260,000. And then we want to directly assist entrepreneurs in their, in building their skills. And Mike Colwell is our Director of The Biz, and he does an excellent job of, of one-on-one mentoring. We provide at least 500, 500 hours of, of free consultation work to entrepreneurs each year. We'll continue to do that. And then we continue to, to work with the Technology Association of Iowa to make sure that we're on the forefront of everything that they're doing as well. That's a lot. Sorry about that. A quick update, but any questions?
Anybody have anything?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Mary Bontrager. I'm the Executive Vice President for Workforce Development and Education with the partnership. I've passed out just a, a little brochure that we use internally and among our member companies to talk about some of the services and some of the work that we do. But I'm going to highlight just a few things, and then talk about some of our key initiatives for 2013. Obviously, as Mike talks about economic development, and we see these wonderful numbers, we can't have that if we don't have the talent equation side. And so that's what myself and my team focus on, making sure that we are not only retaining the workforce that we have, but certainly attracting new professionals to the Greater Des Moines area. From the attraction side, we spend quite a bit of our time on the road doing college campus recruiting, not only in the state of Iowa, but in surrounding states, and then also on campuses that might have a match for the degreed programs that, that match up to the type of workers that we're looking for. We're also doing targeted recruitment efforts. Last fall, we joined up with, with Mike and, and the Economic Development Team, and went to Silicon Valley, and focused not only on attracting perhaps some startup or IT companies to Central Iowa, but also those workers that are in the Silicon Valley. The wonderful thing about us going out now with an IT recruitment message is, we have a whole new ecosystem here that we can market across the country. So not only are there great jobs with our large companies like Principal and Wells-Fargo, but we now have this entrepreneurial ecosystem, so there's a variety of, of job options for individuals in the IT industry, and so we have a new message to take out nationally. We'll also be down at South by Southwest in March, both at the interactive side of South by Southwest, again, focused on attraction of, of technology companies, but also workers, and then also through the music festival, which is our chance to really talk about the unique things that are happening in, in Central Iowa around music and, and the creative class and so forth. Excuse me. One of the efforts that we've done in the last 24 months is, excuse me, using social media and targeting through Career Builder. So we've, we targeted 23 states in the US that had a high population of former Iowans, so individuals that had their profiles on Career Builder that had some tie to Iowa, whether they went to school in Iowa, they maybe had worked here, they grew up here. And then we've just continued about three times a year to send them email, targeted email messages about a comeback campaign. So we try and hit them around emotional times, right before the holidays, right before summer, so we try and remind them of the many great things that Iowa has to offer in the summer. In the fall, around football season, so thinking about coming back to their alma mater. We've been very successful with that campaign. Our open rate on our emails is 49%, and our click-through rate is about 19%. So both of those, the, were well over three times the national average in the utilization of a campaign like that. So again, we're trying to be just a little unique in how we market and sell Greater Des Moines. One of the programs that is, that has been very unique to our community, and we're now hearing other communities are trying to replicate that, and Mayor County has participated the last two years in our Do More in the City Summer Internship Program. And that's a series of six events that we offer for young adults that are doing their college internships in Central Iowa over the course of the summer. It's great exposure to the amenities that we have here. It also has learning moments attached to it. But what's been really effective is the fact that we connect those young adults with over 50 business and community leaders. And it's truly that experience of accessibility, which we all say is a wonderful thing, that an amenity that we have here. Those young adults really get to experience that accessibility to our leaders, and it does truly change their minds on whether they will come back following graduation. their minds on whether they will come back following graduation. We focus obviously on diversity and inclusion, and creating a more inclusive community. Two things that I will touch on for 2013, when we talk about the attraction and retention side, we're in the process of creating a very comprehensive web portal for attraction and retention purposes. Now, many communities have web portals, and they have all kinds of resources about the communities in which you would want to live, and the jobs that are available, and the recreation and arts and cultural amenities that are available. But our site is going to be very unique in the fact that it will have social media integration, which will actually connect people from the greater Des Moines area to individuals outside of the community that are looking onto our website. So as an example, if someone, we want people to really picture themselves in our community. So if someone is looking at neighborhoods, and they go on to the Sherman Hills, and they think, wow, this is a community that kind of feels like me, there will actually be ambassadors, or navigators, or connectors that will have their LinkedIn site pages up on that site that individuals then can connect to and say, so what is it like in Sherman Hills? The same would be true with jobs. If I'm a soon-to-be graduate, and I'm looking for a job in marketing and communications, under that page on the website, there will be, again, ambassadors and navigators, whether that's young adults or people with experience. But it'll be a very rich, vibrant site that will actually be owned by the community. So the Sherman Hills example, they will own their page. They can add photos, they can add content, they can add new ambassadors, blogs, connections. So it will be something very unique in how we sell this community. It'll also be very helpful for people that are here as we look at retention. Many times companies are losing individuals because they just aren't making those valued connections. This website will be one way where people can actually make, find the resources, and then make human-to-human connections with people that can be their navigators and resources. And then the last piece I wanted to touch on, in Capitol Crossroads, under the human Capitol, it called for a college and career readiness initiative. And so we've been looking at other communities. Louisville's 55,000 Degrees, Cincinnati has Strive Cincinnati, there's Graduate Philadelphia. But we haven't named what our big goal will be, but sometime within probably the first half of 2013, you will be hearing about kind of this big, bold goal that will galvanize business, education, and community leaders around a common education workforce agenda that will align with our economic development plans. And I think that's a key word, the alignment, because we want to make sure that our young people recognize where the career opportunities will be here in Central Iowa in the coming years, and that we're aligning their educational experience to match up to where those demands will be. So more on that, and more on the web portal. Thank you. Any questions?
Very good. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Eugene Meyer, 2479 167th Court, Winterset, Iowa, President of the Greater Des Moines Partnership. It's a real pleasure to be here. I want to begin, Mr. Mayor, by thanking you very much for allowing me the opportunity to sit through a CIP presentation.
[laughing]
I forgot how much I miss those. With that said, I'm here just to talk briefly.
Don't let you listen to Bank On, but apparently there's others up here that thought you ought to get.
I'm willing to stay.
You wouldn't appreciate it.
If you have coffee, I'm willing to stay. I'm here to talk to you just briefly about Capitol Crossroads. Certainly a project that you're well aware of, has received a lot of publicity. Most of you at the DIAS are participating in one way or another in that project. Before I do that, though, I would mention one thing. Mike Spazie was up here doing a wonderful job of explaining our regional economic development efforts. But also know that Tim Leach, who works for Glenn Lyons, does nothing but downtown economic development. So we have one person specifically assigned to work on downtown in the city of Des Moines. Back to Capitol Crossroads, launched back in September of 2011. It's really, frankly, taken on a life of its own. As you go through the brochure that I provided you, we took that strategic plan of about 98 pages and broke it into 11 specific capitals. We selected co-chairs for each of those capitals, and those co-chairs are listed in the back of your book. We were very thoughtful about doing that. We wanted people who had a proven track record of success in this community, and a passion for the topic we wanted them to undertake. The only change to that list is that the Capitol Corridor was initially chaired by Steve Zumba and Greg Joffrey, then President of Iowa State University. Steve Leath, the current president, has now taken his position, and is now co-chairing that particular Capitol. One of the outcomes that we have found has proved very successful for us is that every 90 days, we bring the co-chairs together at the Botanical Center. And a number of you have sat through those meetings. And what's proved fruitful about that is that they have to report out to the tri-chairs, Barry Griswold, Angela Conley, and Karen Hayden, and the other people that are on the steering committee, the progress they've made the previous 90 days. It's kind of gotten to be kind of a competition thing, because they all stand up in front of their peers and talk about what's been going on the last 90 days. And we're going to continue that in the second year of Capitol Crossroads. The other thing we're going to do, and you'll all be invited to this, is have a celebration in April at the World Food Price Headquarters, and just kind of celebrate the many, many successes of Capitol Crossroads. You've heard about a few of those this morning from previous staff members that have been up here. We have some 80-some projects underway. As it relates specifically to the city, to the capitals, our really focus on activities going on in Des Moines. Certainly the Capitol Core, which is co-chaired by your city manager and Mary O'Keefe. And then we also developed a Capitol called the Urban Core, which concentrates on nine neighborhoods up north of I-235. They have tri-chairs there, Tom Urban, Terry Caldwell-Johnson, and Liz Buck, who lives at United Way. So there's just a lot of things going on in that area. One of the projects that we are really excited about, and I have spent a lot of my time working on, has got to do with the Downtown Redevelopment Company. That was not necessarily a new idea at all. I know some of you up here were very, very deeply involved in previous efforts along these same lines. But the report, when it came out, called for the creation of a land bank, which is no different than the old redevelopment corporations that existed here previously. We went to Larry Zimmerman, who was then our chair. He liked the idea. We talked to a few people. We pulled a number of people in the community together. Got a lot of volunteer work, pro bono work, if you will, out of law firms, and a couple of the banks. We now have 18 investors who have all pledged a $15,000 line of credit to purchase our first property, which is the old Allied Building downtown, and an adjacent parking lot to that. We're giving strong consideration, and most likely, if necessary, we'll provide funding to backstop the whole land swap deal that's going on between the county, Penny's Building, the Plex, and the Y. And we're going out to get new investors. The thing, frankly, that warms my heart about all that is this is all about downtown, but yet the people that are stepping up to the plate are coming, excuse me, from all over the region, which I think is a great sign about the wonderful support that exists in the business community for the success of downtown. With that, any questions?
Anybody?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
That concludes the report. So, Mayor, council members, again, we greatly appreciate the time that you gave us today to give you an update on some of the things we've been working on, give you a little preview for what we've got in store for 2013. And again, we greatly appreciate the public-private partnership, all these rankings that Mike referenced. There's obviously something that, in this region, we're doing right with our publics, with our nonprofits, with our businesses, and we've got that recipe going. And we want to continue to work with all of you moving forward, and do what we can to take it to even the next level. It's very, very exciting. So again, thanks for your service. Thanks for your support of the partnership and the DCA, and thanks for having us here today.
Jay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jean, we got Bank On.
[laughing]
Mayor, as everybody's leaving, can we have just a short conversation about this? I know we have another agenda item.
Sure.
As I understand it, we've kind of completed their kind of five-year plan as they seek partners, and now we're at the phase of needing to kind of approve another five-year relationship. Is that generally right?
Mr. Coleman, council members, I think that's pretty fair.
Have we voted on it yet, or did we?
No.
Okay.
You voted on, there was a proposal, I think, five years ago, that stipulated the funding amounts that we have been presenting to you.
Yeah, we did vote on it.
On the fifth year.
On the fifth year.
But not looking forward.
I think you're talking about the next one.
And I think you're, I'm looking at Jean and Jay in particular, but you're at this stage of kind of moving forward and looking at the future as well, right now. And, you know, I'm glad you guys were here for the CIP, and I know that you know this, but it's probably good for you to hear it. Every one of those lines needs more money, and everything that we talked about would be a better project if we had more funding. And I would just, I'd strongly encourage you to put together a plan with the city manager, as we have before, that keeps the city of Des Moines as a, you know, one of your institutions that are in the inner circle, but that has some, you know, real specific outcomes for how we can define this for the citizens. You gave us a bunch of that today, but clearly we're going to need to, you know, make sure that as we look out five years, that we can justify it to our citizens. I know that we can. I think we just have to agree to the kind of the words and how we do it. And I, for one, will say that this is, while it's a very hard thing to vote for, because people would rather fill potholes and, you know, get another street sign up and that kind of stuff. For my role at the MPO and the CVB in particular, we've accomplished a lot, and those things wouldn't have been accomplished without the strong partnership between the city and DCA and the partnership. And for that, I'm grateful. I just want to see it continue and be better than it ever has been before.
Mr. Manager, you want to make a quick comment?
Mr. Coleman, I appreciate your comments, and I just want to add to that a little bit. I think it's important to sort of point out the fact that the relationship that the city has with the partnership is a critical one. It's not without controversy from time to time, or disagreement, but the fundamental fact is that there are a lot of major projects in this community that would not have happened had it not been for the relationship that we've enjoyed with the partnership over the years. But there's one aspect of it that I would suggest continues to be something that we're going to have to work on, particularly if we're looking at funding levels going into the future, and that is the whole matter of communication. How do you communicate on a dynamic and effective way that allows both organizations to maintain a pretty good understanding of what's going on in the other? Because there's so much that goes on in this town, occasionally, those communications are not perhaps what all council members want. And so one of the things that Jay and I and Jean have talked about a bit, Glenn as well, is looking for ways that that can happen formally and informally. And we're beginning to talk about some ways, some techniques where we could get together on a more periodic basis, and include council members individually or collectively, however you want to do that, to have those discussions. We don't need to wait for these annual sessions like this, and frankly, I haven't remembered one of these in quite some time, to have this kind of a discussion. So there may be some real opportunities, and good reasons, frankly, particularly if we're looking at the question you raised, Mr. Coleman, about what the future is, and how do we sort of manage this relationship, both in terms of the substance of projects, as well as our financial contribution to the organization. So I would suggest it to you as something for us to focus on, particularly as we look at what you have outlined for us.
Well, I'd like, you know, the outcome of whatever we create in terms of kind of an agreement between the two parties should get to the communication, and we're difficult to communicate with. You know, we have seven, you know, if you compared us to your other members, we had seven owners, and the CEO and the manager, I mean, we're, it's, we got a lot of people that expect to be communicated with, so we're probably more of a pain in the butt than some of your other members. But we think we deserve it.
The pain in the butt part.
Well, yeah.
Speak for yourself.
The, I've had a fair number of difficult conversations with them, as this one has been polite, over time. But what I'd like to see is that what we create in terms of kind of a goal and working together would be the trigger for which we would continue to make additional investments each year. So, you know, we might commit to a certain level, and then at the end of that year, if we reach those targets, it would be assumed that we would move forward with that, and maybe even automatically, you know. So at the front end, we'd need something, you know, really strong that would show what the agreement and what the city and citizens expect to get out of a multi-year agreement with the partnership.
Thanks again. All right. Doug, you want to come up? Our next update is going to be on the Bank On program. This, as I remember, Ms. Hensley, you and I attended a few years ago, that a program that really reaches out to try to help some people that need some training, need some understanding in how to work with their finances, how to be successful. And we find that there are a number of folks in our city, as a matter of fact, who are sort of over the national average in terms of percentages of people that are unbanked or underbanked. So Doug, tell us what we're doing to help out those folks.
Great. Good morning, Mayor, council members. Doug Roman, Housing Services Director. Actually, I want to introduce Melissa Nordele Erp from the, she's our program manager, from the Community Action Agency Division of the Housing Department, and she's led this effort to bring all the players together. So, Melissa.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'm going to talk a little bit about Bank On. And basically, the Bank On program is a national model for promoting access to mainstream financial services, and supporting working families, and strengthening local economies. This model was first developed by the city and county of San Francisco in 2006. Through Bank On programs, municipalities basically bring together financial institutions, community organizations, and financial regulators, and other partners to basically develop and implement this initiative. And Bank On Central Iowa was actually initiated through the Asset Building Coalition of Des Moines. And the program is intended to help about 41,000 households in the city of Des Moines that are unbanked or underbanked. Bank On programs actually reduce the reliance on high-cost check cashers, payday lenders, and other alternative financial services. As you can see from the statistics from 2009, where we kind of sit nationally in comparison to Des Moines. This can cause an unbanked household to actually lose about $1,000 on the average per year. And these unnecessary fees, in combination, can trap a family into an endless debt of, endless cycle of debt. A city's economic health really depends on the financial stability of its residents, and that's why this initiative is important. Guiding principles and services basically arise out of the causes why low-to-moderate individuals and families are inbanked. Some of those are the overall perception of being banked, lack of knowledge of how to navigate the system, need for immediate access to being banked, as well as maybe they've had a past bad experience, they're involved in check system history, and also just basically the perceived cost or high cost of banking, which isn't always true. Bank On Central Iowa has actually developed baseline products that participants or financial institutions that are partners are going to agree to offer to better serve low and moderate bank. Some of the subcommittees of Bank On Central Iowa, basically, they're comprised of community organizations, as well as financial institutions on each of the subcommittees. Partnering products, our chair of that is Marsha Kephart through Iowa State Bank, who has been a very committed and basically taken a real lead in this initiative. Alec Gorinsky from Bank of the West has come on recently, and he's been a great resource, offering us his resources and tools with his experience on Bank On. And then outcomes and evaluations, we have Jane Frogg from United Way, Deborah and Sandra from Affinity Credit Union, as well as other organizations. Marketing and outreach, we have Tracy Stiles from Metro Credit Union, as well as Peggy Aguilar from Habitat for Humanity, and Joanne Custer from Custer LTD. We also reached out to the American Advertising Federation, and through their community service portion, and we've actually had Tim Schultz, who has generously donated his time and developed the logo in combination with the tagline with the marketing and outreach community. So we've been very blessed to have some good So, we've been very blessed to have some good and diverse partners on our subcommittees. Program goals are kind of identified on that slide for the first year once we launch. And one of the key components of a successful Bank On, there are several key components, but one of them really is the development of a data collection strategy and the ability to measure the impact of Bank On. And it just needs to be constantly reassessed, and especially when it comes to marketing and outreach and making sure we're reaching those targeted households. Maintaining partner involvement, and also developing ongoing new partners during this process, and continued support of elected officials. Des Moines Community Action Agency is where I work, and we provide a variety of year-round and seasonal programs. We actually serve the low-income individuals and families. Most of our individuals and families are under 150% of federal poverty level. Serving one of the programs, which is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, we actually can have over 7,000 households in a five-month period coming through our doors. For some of our crisis assistance programs, a lot of times, people present to me their immediate and essential needs at our office. We're a natural pathway for that. We actually offer financial education classes and plan on being one of the financial education partners, but we actually main, mandate it to get financial assistance for some of our programs. I call it a positive sanction. But what we're finding out is facilitators are teaching the classes. We are asking if they have a current checking or savings account, and we're finding that the majority of our clients are unbanked. So, what we plan to do is continue to provide education. The Marketing and Outreach Committee is actually developing a referral card that will list all the providers, as well as how do you open an account and why do you need to become The status of Bank On is we're moving forward. We have participation letters of agreements out to financial institutions and are in the process of working on that. We've touched base with community organizations that are going to be financial education providers, and those letters are to go out this week. Our role at the city has been basically to provide our time or in-kind support. The need for outside financial resources to support our management of this as it grows and fosters may be needed, and the mayor and council can assist us by really raising public awareness of the financial issues that arise to a city or a community when people are unbanked, as well as facilitating partnerships for the committees and the successful initiative of this project. So, do you have any questions, or?
Anybody? Chris?
You know, I just really appreciate your support and you pulling this together, because I know as the mayor indicated, it was a slow start. It just took a while to get it going, but the economic impact is really, really significant in our community. And you're talking about the Des Moines Community Action Agency. That's brilliant. I mean, if you stop and think about the number of people that go through there that are unbanked, but I would hope that we could tie it into VIDA, the VIDA program- Oh, we plan to. And, you know, because of the earned income tax credit program- Definitely. All of the filings that are going on. I don't know what the percentage is, but a pretty significant percentage of residents that go through those programs many times don't have accounts. And what we don't want them to do is, you know, to have a delay in those refunds or have them going elsewhere where they're going to have to pay more to get it done. So, I'd love to see the city, the city has been so supportive in providing your support, and that is unique in other communities. I know that's been one of the reasons that this program has not succeeded in other communities is because they didn't have the ongoing support to kind of be the glue to keep everybody marching down the same path.
Well, thank you very much, and it's been a great initiative, and it's really a great community initiative that is much needed.
Just to tag on to that a little bit, this is a program that we are going to be supportive. We've got great leadership here on staff to do it. But it's also a program that's not going to succeed unless our partners step up and do their part of it. We can't do this by ourselves. It does require participation from lending institutions and a whole variety of people, as was outlined. And as we get into the program, if those partnerships, if you will, don't hold up, we're going to be back to you, asking for perhaps your help a little bit to call people and encourage them to hop on board and continue to support the program. My fear is, once we announce it, that people won't stay focused on it, and we won't be able to deliver the services that we're talking about. It's a great program, very beneficial. We're there. We can't do it by ourselves.
Thank you.
I think I've read that the school district, some of them are putting in personal finance classes for the students, and I didn't know that as a result of your work with the schools and that, but I think it's something that is very much needed, to learn how to reconcile their bank accounts and things of that nature, that is going to be very helpful throughout their life. I don't know if that's a result of some of your work-
That's not a result of this, but they have talked about incorporating financial education on the high school level. So, it's definitely needed.
Skip? Chris? Good stuff. Thank you very much. Let's open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, thank you all for coming. Let's be adjourned until this evening.
Don't give him too much time, though.